I want to welcome you, council and our guests live and those who are watching to our special council meeting. And Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Hartke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember McLeimans is absent, excused. Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Orlando.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And Councilmember McLeimans had surgery earlier today and is unable to, was unable to reschedule at last minute as well as because of the after effects. So I know he's with us in spirit and wanted to be here, but is not here in presence. Counsel, let me give you a game plan of what we're going to do here. I have some comments I would like to make. I have asked some staff to share some things. I am looking at issuing a proclamation tomorrow and I ultimately would welcome your input on that is why we're gathering. We have been walking through this together in terms of locked up with each other, in terms of advice and counsel, in terms of we've gone through this and I would like to continue to do that. So let me start off with some comments here. I do want to thank you all, council staff and our community for convening today, for a special meeting to discuss directives for residents related to reducing the spread of COVID-19. Yesterday, our governor, Governor Ducey, provided local governments the ability to adopt policies regarding wearing masks in public for the purpose of mitigating the spread of COVID-19. And since that announcement, council office has heard from hundreds of community stakeholders on both sides of the matter. I have spent five hours responding last night to emails. I have over, literally over 500, 600, 700 in my box today that I have just not had a single moment to do the same. I know many of you are responding and many of you are also unable to respond to everyone for the same response, for the same reasons. Our goal from the beginning of the pandemic has been to protect public health and ensure economic vitality for our community. We've seen over the last week plus that the number of cases testing positive continues to rise dramatically. We've also seen that the rise is not equal to availability with medical resources or the death rate. This recent spike that we are seeing of positive cases is not matched by an equal spike of morbidity or an equal spike of equal reduction of our hospital facilities. The purpose behind following the CDC guidelines is to slow the spread of infection. And taking these steps to restore consumer confidence in economic activity in our community and with these protocols in place, people are more apt to support our local businesses as well as to stay healthy and to protect the loved ones that they care most about. So the governor has issued guidelines that direct businesses. I'm not interested in layering things upon top of what the governor is already doing concerning his latest, his latest order as well as that was on top of previous orders. I'm also not interested in doing anything that would augment or further a shutdown in our own community. I, and I know everyone else in this room, is interested in the health of our community, both those individually, ourselves, those whom we love, as well as making sure that our businesses and those who work in larger, small businesses are able to continue to do so. I've been in communication last night and today with Phoenix Mayor Gallego, with Scottsdale Mayor Lane, with Tempe Mayor Mitchell, with Mesa Mayor Giles, and with Gilbert Mayor Daniel. It makes no sense to do anything that is so out of step with our neighbors when we're talking or addressing a pandemic because the borders of Chandler interact with each and every one of those. So I've been very interested to make sure that, in knowing what they're doing and what they intend to do. As it relates to schools, and I've received many emails as we all have in communications of whether fearful parents or fearful teachers are wondering what's going to happen in our schools, that their policy decisions are governed by their own elected officials that serve on their school boards and the Arizona Department of Health. They have their own passageway that determine and direct their, what they're going to do concerning opening, concerning safety instructions and everything else. And that's their decision to make and not ours. But today's, we do have decisions before us. Guidelines for our city facilities, indoor and outdoor. Directions for our general community regarding wearing masks. So my intent today is to take input from you all and to work with our city staff on language for an emergency proclamation that would be issued tomorrow. It would add on to the previous proclamation. I want to align the timeline of this proclamation and the language in the governor's executive order to revisit it in two weeks so that, again, we are not out of step with our neighbors or with other things that are also going on in this community. So at this point, I want to hand this over to our city manager to, for comments as well as staff input. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to apologize, pulling the mask down for this discussion. But nonetheless, this, I know as you have laid out, is extremely complicated issue. The health of the community is certainly at the forefront. And from my standpoint, the health of city employees is also at the forefront. And actually, on Tuesday, I did send an email out to all city employees requesting that mask be used. And so you can see city employees are such in the room right now because of issues possibly internally that we needed to address. And we have a lot that are directly impacted by those coming in our doors. And so just for the protection of both, that was done on Tuesday. Definitely, we can have some discussion about what we know other cities are doing, if that's something that council is interested in. I can have Ryan talk about that. And also Chief Dwygans and Chief Duggan are here. If you have anything you want input on from an enforcement perspective or at least what we know from the health side of the statistics, both of them are available to you in the room. All the, all the above. All right, let's start with Chief Dwygans and at least get a bit of an update for you all on the health statistics.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So as you said, Mayor, we have seen over the last week, over the last few weeks, quite a dramatic increase in the cases of COVID-19, not only within the state, but within our county and then specifically with the city of Chandler. Numbers are still coming in. It does take a while for the numbers to populate, so we have the exact numbers. But we looked at last week, which these numbers are pretty good, that we saw a 31% increase in the weekly total from the previous week for the state of Arizona, a 35% increase in the weekly total for the county of Maricopa, and then a 27% increase specifically for the city of Chandler. We did pull the numbers again this morning and compared to the first five days of this week and then projected what the rest of the week would be based on that average. We are looking at a, an increase of 36% in the weekly total from last week, 47% for, from Maricopa County, and then 33% again for the city of Chandler. Specific to the city of Chandler, pretty much every one of our ZIP codes. We've had a couple that have been pretty stable, but we are seeing some increases. A5225 right now is still our fasting ZIP code, but we have started to notice that 249 and 286 is starting to see some cases as well. Again, with the tests, I know that there's a lot of confusion on the tests. The test results are still coming in from last week. We are now at 67,000 tests. That was from this morning for last week. And we had a 15% positive rate. Just for some context, the previous week before that was 12%, the week before that was nine, and the week before that was six. And so we have seen over the last four to six weeks in an increase in the actual percentage of positives within the total tests. Right now, the numbers are still a little early for this week and they lag because there is a little bit of delay for the testing. For this week, we have 9,070 tests complete. And again, we're right at that 15% positive PCR rate. Additionally, I would say that serology testing, which is the antibody testing, is still occurring right now. We've seen that go anywhere from a 3.7 at its high to a 3.4. So we're not seeing too much movement with that. So those are, those are our, our numbers specifically on the data. On the hospitals, that is something that we are looking at every day. We did have an opportunity a couple times, including this morning, to reach out to Banner Desert and then to, to the both Dignity Hospitals. Right now, Chandler Regional is at, they're getting very close to being full capacity. That is for their licensed beds. I know I told you this last week. One thing to understand is that these hospitals run this time of year at full capacity and they have what's called surge capacity where they can actually create additional space within the hospital. So even though that says full, there's actually still room within that hospital. Right now, their ICU, they have about 18% capacity. Gilbert is about 95% in their licensed beds and they have about 26% capacity in their ICU. And then Banner Desert is, right now, they have about 14% capacity in the hospital for licensed bed. What they've done is they've divided their ICU into a COVID ICU and a non-COVID ICU. Their COVID ICU has 27% capacity and their non-COVID ICU has about 18% capacity. One other additional comment, Mayor, that I just wanted to touch on is the fact that, I believe you just said that the, the raise in cases does not match the amount of deaths that we're seeing. And that is absolutely true. And we did a lot of research on that today. And really what we're seeing here is that the, the current outbreak over the last few weeks has really hit our 20 to 44-year-old population. In fact, the 0 to 19 and the 20 to 44 population are the fastest growing as far as total percentage for positives. For a little background on that, on April 29th, 20 to 44 accounted for 37% of all positive tests in the state of Arizona. To date, and it's been growing, it now accounts for 49%. The good news is, is that 65 and older on April 29th was at 27%. And as you know, that's one of our most vulnerable populations. It is now down to 14%. And so what we've seen is the 45 to 64 and the 65-plus populations actually have an overall decrease in their percentage of overall positive tests. And the 0 to 19 and the 20 to 44 have had an increase. That's important to know because when we look at deaths specifically, we know that 0 to 19 is zero. There are 0% deaths. The 20 to 44 right now, and this was taken this morning, is at 2%. The 65-plus is at 84%. So 84% of your total deaths have occurred at that 65-plus. Truly, those are our vulnerable population. A breakdown to the weekly increase of positive cases to deaths that we looked at the last four weeks. This week, it's 37% increase in positive cases with only a 7% increase in deaths. Last week was 35% of an increase in positive cases with a 14% increase in deaths. So we have seen that number start to drop a little bit. I believe that that's, you know, specific to the fact that those age groups, that 0 to 19 and 20 to 44 are the ones that do very well with this. Additionally, and I don't have any facts or data to prove this, is that we believe that our, our older population, they are still doing some form of social isolation and they're not out as much. And so they're doing a good job at maybe reducing. So that is the, that's the, the statistics that we have for today. Obviously, we continue to watch this every day and have done for quite some time now. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for being here and having this information. And we could, there's lots and lots of data that we could ask for and it wouldn't, it wouldn't minimize the fact that something serious is going on here. And so, but I will ask you about the 20 to 44 age group. And I guess we have to kind of, probably a little bit of a guess here, but is there a possibility that, that that age group, because it has been historically a little bit less affected, that maybe their numbers, those folks maybe not be, may not have been getting tested as much? Or is this still about this percentages that we're talking about? The growing percentage of positives?
Mayor, Councilmember Rowe. The, the original four to six weeks of this virus when it was here was, was really, the only people we were testing were symptomatic people. And so a lot of those symptomatic people were our elderly or people that had some type of underlying condition, so our vulnerable population. As you know, about six weeks ago, we started, the governor enacted the testing blitz. And that's where it went from, you have to have a specific symptom that matches a COVID-like illness to if you feel you've been exposed, that you could go get that test. And so we are seeing more people that, that aren't necessarily sympt, they're asymptomatic, that are getting these tests. I don't know if that answers your question.
I think it did. I think it did. Thank you.
Mayor. Vice Mayor, then Councilmember Landa.
So again, so I can rationalize this data in my head. You said it was a lot of numbers, a lot of percentages thrown out. But in the end, for me, the importance is the capacity. One of the reasons that we wanted to suppress the curve that we talked about, which nobody talks about much anymore, was because of the capacity in our hospitals. We needed to make sure that if this wound up being worse, again, hard hit for the older population, which we did know from the beginning, we wanted to make sure we had the beds, the ventilators, and the staff and resources to be able to ensure that we did everything we could in order to save their life. What I'm hearing, though, is that our capacity is still there. We have seen, again, fully agree and I understand that we have a massive uptick in, in our cases, but a lot of them, as you mentioned, being asymptomatic. We have a capacity and the hospitals are creeping up. It sounds like are creeping down, however you want to say it, more people in the hospital. But the death rate seems to be going down, which is also very, seems, seems very positive as a percentage of total cases. Is, is first statement, is that correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that is correct. We looked at the, the line of positive cases per day over the last month and a half versus the line of deaths per day, and it's relatively flat as far as the death goes. Whereas the, the cases are obviously going, going up pretty high.
And that's one thing that I also want to, for those that may be watching in from the room here, there's a lot of data that people are creating and throwing around on, online, through Twitter and Facebook. There's one graph that, that was making its rounds that was actually accurate on the number of cases that were coming in, but they were showing the ICU beds actually, the consumption, higher than the actual case numbers, which was kind of, it was very throwaway, so that we were actually more people in ICU coming in than were COVID cases, which again, could be accurate, but that doesn't mean that they're all COVID-related. So that's where I want to make sure people understand that that data can be manipulated and you do need to look at our city website and also to the CDC website to make sure you're getting accurate and again, full information. My other question, and this one, I don't know if you may have, hopefully you do, you've had it before, is the percentage we talked about of the ICU availability at 18% for, I think it was for Chandler Regional and 26% for Gilbert Mercy. Do we know how, what percentage of ICU beds are dedicated to COVID cases versus non-COVID cases? Again, what I'm looking for here is there is capacity available, but if the trend keeps as it is and the COVID cases do jump 50%, 100%, 600%, are they a major effect in consuming that capacity? Or is it a minor effect or they only accounting for a small percentage of the total consumption right now?
Mayor, Vice Mayor. Just recently, I had the opportunity to, to meet with Chandler Regional and Mercy Gilbert. And that was one of the questions we discussed is what, what is the population, the current census of the hospital, whether it is in the, the emergency department, whether it is the licensed beds or the ICU? How much of that is attributed to COVID-19? What we found is that it's, it's not a very large amount. What is occurring right now is that you have a lot of people coming to the hospital that are very sick. These are people with cardiac problems, respiratory problems, stroke problems. There's a lot of thought out there, and I can't say that this is fact, is that during the, during the isolation phase, when we were pretty much quarantined, there were a lot of people that were concerned with going to the hospital or going to their primary care physician. And so what they did is waited. And when they normally would have abdominal pain and go to the hospital, they didn't want to do that because they didn't want to get, you know, potentially exposed to COVID. What they believe is now happening is those people are now coming to the ERs and they're very sick. And so they're seeing a lot of their numbers within the hospitals that are not COVID-19 patients, but are very sick people. Obviously, that plus the addition of a new virus will exacerbate the, the capacity issue. But right now, they generally have some, some pretty sick people within their facility. I can tell you from a public safety perspective, from a regional standpoint, the number of cardiac arrests that we have seen over the last few months regionally has gone up. I've heard numbers as close to 60%. Again, we attribute that to people having early onset of chest pain, but maybe not getting the help that they needed. The longer you wait, the more it exacerbates the problem and you kind of hit that point of no return. And so it is, I don't have the specific number for you, but I can tell you that I have talked to hospital officials that say, as we speak today, they have some very sick people that are not COVID-19 positive.
And, and this is where your, your first statement, though, that the, that the COVID-positive patients in the ICU and in general in the hospital, I guess I seem to be, not asking for a number here, but they are a minor. positive patients in the ICU and in general in the hospital, I guess seem to be, not asking for a number here, but they are a minor uh, uh, su, consumer, should I say, a, a, a minor uh, consumer of the hospital beds right now.
They are, I, 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 I don't know if I could say minor, I could say that um, it is, they are not the majority of the ICU patients. I just, I just don't know which pers, what percentage it is.
Some answers, okay, thank you. All right, that answers my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Orlando.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks Chief for giving us um, obviously totals are going up and obviously capacity. We could argue capacity totals. Where are you getting your statistics, your statistics from, your data from?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember, the only uh, data that we will utilize is through Arizona Department of Health Services, which is updated at uh, 9:00 AM every morning, or uh, the Department of Public Health through Maricopa County. Uh, those are our two data sources. Uh, as far as some of the specific information to the hospitals, we actually have a relationship with Dignity. They are our base hospital. Our paramedics work underneath them. And so we call them and we can get the current census on the hospitals, but that's the only data sources that we.
Good, so it's pretty reliable in your mind?
It is 100% backed and double-checked that it is coming from one of those two sites only.
So Chief, would you succeed, would you say you're, you're, you were successful if you got to a house and already burnt down?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember, I, I think that uh, you know, we don't ever want to respond to a house fire. Um, you know, obviously uh, if we do respond to a house fire, we would want to put the, put the fire out, but the real goal would be to never have the house fire.
That's what I'm driving at. And we spend a lot of time on our code enforcement. We spend a lot of time upfront to ensure that we prevent potential housing burning down. So I guess it's been frustrating to me and a lot of residents and a lot of business owners is we keep looking at capacities, ICUs, number of ventilators, number of this, number of that. The bottom line here in medicine, the bottom line in your profession, a lot of bottom line in the, in the chief's process fire is prevention. If we could prevent upfront, we don't have to worry about the number of ventilators. We don't have to worry about the number of ICU beds. We don't have to worry about the number of capacities. Or am I going to transfer this patient down the road to somebody else? And we don't have to worry about burials. Or at least try to mitigate that, correct?
Councilmember, that, that is uh, absolutely correct. We do, um, I, as you know, we have a, a, we have very robust prevention efforts, not only in firefighting, but in preventing drowning with kids, um, preventing people from getting burned. Um, and so we always, uh, we always say that our best investment is to prevent an emergency from ever happening.
Okay, next, and so that's, that's what I'm looking at, prevention. I think that's the medical profession looking at, I think that's the business I'm talking about, looking at is prevention. How do we prevent, mitigate? You can't prevent everything, obviously. How do we mitigate? How do we slow this down until we get some kind of, of vaccine or whatever the case may be down the road? Thank you, Chief. Thanks, Mayor.
Any additional questions to, from Chief Dugans? All right, so.
All right. Mayor Council, I'm going to ask Ryan Peters, our intergovernmental policy manager, to come forward and uh, kind of give the highlights of the governor's executive order yesterday and then a little bit of what other cities that we know at least are what they're looking to do, at least at this point, because some of them still have to meet with their councils uh, as a whole.
Thank you, City Manager, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, yesterday, we all know the governor uh, did a press conference to outline an update to the COVID-19 plan and what he's looking to do with the new executive order. Um, he provided local governments with the ability to adopt policies regarding wearing masks for the public for the purpose of mitigating the spread of COVID-19. And he also uh, reinforced the message that the business community needs to comply with uh, CDC guidelines. Uh, prior to the, yesterday's press conference and corresponding action is recommendations that the governor put out. And instead he is, he's forcing uh, the businesses to uh, go ahead and enforce those guidelines that the CDC recommends. Um, Governor's Office also was sensitive within the executive order to ensure that we focus first on an education effort and a compliance effort before moving into any kind of enforcement actions. And wanted to leave it up to the local jurisdictions on the best uh, means for accomplishing that, uh, whether that's requiring a mask uh, within your boundaries and how the uh, law enforcement or enforcement of those look. Um, so with that, the cities and towns across Arizona, we're hearing media reports from, you know, the Tucson, Yuma, Flagstaff, all over the valley, uh, various cities figuring out what they're going to do to uh, comply with the governor's order. And that includes uh, some of the counties as well. Um, so again, uh, governor's order focused on education first and, and, and compliance before moving into enforcement actions. Uh, Phoenix actually is meeting tomorrow to discuss, um, at 9:00 AM to discuss requiring masks throughout the city um, in the, in various public places. Uh, City of Mesa is also meeting tomorrow to discuss the contents of a proclamation uh, that will likely be similar to Phoenix's. Tempe, Mayor Mitchell issued proclamation this afternoon requiring masks in places of public accommodation. Uh, Scottsdale is discussing a proclamation requiring masks and enforcing against businesses that don't comply. They've received a lot of news, a lot of news reports about various businesses in their downtown area that um, weren't uh, complying with the, the CDC guidelines. So they're really focusing on that. Uh, Gilbert is meeting first thing tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM to discuss an emergency order requiring masks as a council. And Maricopa County actually is discussing having a countywide mandate that uh, makes all the cities within all the residents and businesses within uh, Maricopa County on similar playing field. Um, they're also surveying the various cities to see where they're at before making that decision. Um, and our, our cities also in the West Valley are discussing this and having similar conversations that we are. So with that, I know I covered a lot of ground. Um, available for questions?
So does the, does the county supersede the cities within it as the state does or, or how does that work with the county? I know how it works with the state.
Mayor, the answer to the question is the county would supersede if they had some sort of boundaries, but they could also carve things out if they chose, where something may apply to county residents only and then leave it jurisdiction by jurisdiction, or they could overlay the entire county and have a, a health policy that overlays the entire county.
Okay. And as I, as I stated, I, I probably spent about three hours in the last few days talking to six of these mayors a little bit more, and everyone is similarly looking at a mask initiative order uh, type of thing that I'm aware of, and some are, are have their own caveats upon that to add to that is, is, is my understanding it, although I won't know for sure until they actually release as Mayor Mitchell did and um, related to their council or, or others doing a, a proclamation, so, okay.
Mayor, that's accurate. Every city is contemplating this and I think it's, they're trying to tailor, they're trying to broadly apply, so we're similar across jurisdictions. But the, sometimes the words have to vary based on individual city charters and how the different codes work out. Um, but I think the theme is generally the same. We all want to be on the same page with how this, how the rollout looks like, uh, should there be uh, you know, any kind of mask requirements in the county. And it appears based on some of the actions that we've seen to date, as well as public statements, that uh, there will be a number of cities within Maricopa County that are looking to enforce masks.
Yeah, particularly in our area, it doesn't make any sense to me because our borders are so porous and people live here or people work there and live here, or vice versa, that that a re, I've always been a, a fan and a proponent of regional approaches so that our, I, I honestly can't clearly articulate the difference with my border with Gilbert, for example, our, our closest neighbor in many ways because it is such a jagged thing and neither can any resident. Uh, maybe there's a few and maybe I really could, but it's, it's a difficult thing to determine where Tempe, where Chandler, and even where Mesa and Gilbert and Chandler touch on our northern ends. So it's uh, we, we want to be working together and we are working together. Vice Mayor, you had a question?
Uh.
Comment?
Just playing with me. Um, yeah, so just a quick hint uh, due to Jerry uh, Brooks's uh, foresight. He actually has all of the Chandler signs browned, so that's a good way to know whether or not in Chandler or not, by the way. For anybody else out there, a little tidbit of information. Um, so first, thank you, Ryan. I know that was probably a lot of legwork having to be done to track all that down in such a short period, period of time. So I want to thank you and, and, and your staff that, that's helping you out with that. Um, for my personal side, I, it's great to know what our uh, neighbors are doing. Again, uh, as my ma, mayor said, um, we are porous, we have such a, a diversity on, on work, play, uh, uh, our neighbors and even, you know, going to businesses and, and we, we, we share so much. Um, however, uh, the one difference, uh, when I look at our, our other cities is there are different uh, resources we have available to us. We have different prioritization, um, and we do not run our budgets the same nor focus on our resources and uh, income uh, revenues and expenditures. So there's a lot of differences between our cities still. It's still good to see what our neighbors do, uh, but there are some municipalities that are very heavily relying on enforcement for revenue as a line item, uh, which we are not. And so that sometimes can tend to skew the numbers. Um, so I kind of wanted to make sure the public aware and for my own thought process uh, to let people know where I'm coming from is that it's good to know as, as um, uh, for, as a data point, but just because our neighbor may do uh, one action, uh, it doesn't necessarily mean that we should uh, edict and, and it shouldn't dictate what we do. Um, hence why we may be a little different. Uh, two questions and one, I don't know if I'm going to be able to answer, you don't want to answer, but um, regarding the county, so if the county overlays a requirement similar to how the state did to us, can a city within that municipal, or within the county or state be stricter or more liberal with those policies? Or must they be abided by, by the letter of the law and that is the only policy that they're allowed to follow? Ie, if, if the county does come down with something very minimalistic, we recommend lightest language possible uh, that cities, you know, tell their citizens to, you know, please wear a mask with no enforcement behind it. A city within the county can go much further and institute a thousand dollar fines and misdemeanor uh, citations for not wearing a mask, whereas another city can say, you know what, that's as light as I want to go. I think that's, that's even too light and so I'm going and saying, we're not doing any proclamation and we're not requiring anyone to wear masks. Where does that lie legally? And I don't know if that's actually yours or the city attorney actually, I'm sorry.
Mayor, if I may, um, Vice Mayor, again, we have to wait and see what, what is actually issued. Um, I think it is, I wouldn't presume that they will preempt the cities, but I, I honestly don't know until we see the order and how it's issued. And we have no indication at this point what they're looking at.
So when the governor issued his executive order, he did preempt the city saying the city's must?
He absolutely did. And he, he gave specific direction on what we could and couldn't do.
Okay, so it depends on the county wording, whether or not it's a city must and or has an option to.
Right.
So, okay, okay. Um, and then the, the, the second question had to do with the, uh, the Tempe enforcement. So we mentioned that uh, Tempe's already issued uh, a requirement for, for face masks in, in public areas and there is an enforcement behind it. Uh, what is that enforcement that they're enacting on? And they're, they're the only one that's done this so far, like you've said, in, in this immediate area.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, my understanding is their enforcement is going to be focused on education first and opportunity to comply. And then if things need to escalate from there, then they'll follow along with what uh, is laid out in Title 26 for, under the mayor's uh, proclamation of emergency authority, which ultimately leads up to a class one misdemeanor.
So it can be a class one misdemeanor for not wearing a mask in public if you not complied after being calibrated by an officer?
Of, of all the cities that I've spoken with, I can't reinforce enough, Mayor, that this is a education first, soft touch. Um, what can we do to help you comply? Where can we provide masks to those who may not have an opportunity to, to procure one themselves? Um, that, that really is the approach that they need, that they are looking to take. But Title 26 specifically lays out emergency proclamations and statute specifically calls out penalties for violating those, those proclamations. So there are, you know, while the enforcement of that may not be ultimately what they would like to do, because it falls within Title 26, my understanding is they're just following along with the escalation that's set up in state statute.
And in Tempe, it was, as you said, it was at all public spaces, indoor, outdoor. Um, if you're able to maintain uh, social distancing or not, doesn't matter, must wear a mask in public. Was that what there was?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, it's anywhere, my understanding, again, we need to really digest it to understand it. And each one of these are, you know, several pages of text and, and so my understanding is places of public accommodation. So whether that's a business, a, a park where you can't have adequate social distancing, um, anywhere there's public accommodation, um, there's a mask requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember one, then Councilmember Orlando.
My question is, um, so for the enforcement part, at the beginning you educate them and ask them to comply. So how if the mask is not available? How can they comply even if they want to?
Mayor, Councilmember, I think, again, the opportunity would be to try to provide masks where we, where we don't have a policy, so I can't speak to how we would comply. But in those, in those cities that do have policies already in place, I think those cities would like to represent that they can help uh, folks get into compliance where possible. Um, and, and, and move forward um, from there.
But apparently if the officer or the enforcement, enforcer do not have the mask with them, it, it just cannot comply on the side, it would.
Mayor and Councilmember, I think that's where judgment and, and, you know, comes into play. And uh, trying to evaluate the situation and all that, you know, law enforcement speak to how they interact with the public on, on compliance of whatever law is out there uh, that, that needs to be complied with.
Thank you.
Councilmember Orlando.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so let me uh, the, the, the proclamation, you said that has a mandatory punitive? Class one, is that what that, I heard you say that earlier, or is?
Mayor, Councilmember, my understanding of proclamations conducted under Title 26, the emergency operations statutes, uh, violations of those proclamations can lead up to a class one misdemeanor.
Can, can, that's the key right there, right?
And Mayor, if I may, jump in on the legal side of things.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Thank you. If I may, Councilmember Orlando. Under Title 26, um, that's where the state has stepped in and preempted the cities. Um, so they've said that if we have violations and we're going to enforce them, it is a class one misdemeanor. Enforcement is a broad spectrum, obviously.
Okay, thank you. So Mayor, um, you have been, uh, the years I've known you, you've always been a champion of working with other communities. Um, schools, we've worked together on a lot of those processes. We worked with uh, shopping centers, sharing with Gilbert. We work wastewater treatment plants. Um, we have mutual aid agreements with police and fire. So we have worked with our cities on many, many things. Um, and the brown sign I believe was Bob Robson who proposed that color, but that's okay, well, that's another story. Um, although Jerry did have a change of sign, but I think it was Bob, but. So those are all tangible things. Those are all, here's my border, here's my wastewater treatment plant, here's my school, here's what we're sharing. But does the virus know that? And I'm not asking you to answer that question, because that's the question here. The virus doesn't know that, that that's Chandler, that's this place, doesn't even know it's in Arizona. It doesn't even know it's, I'm the host or you're the host. It's going to go and it's going to pass those borders. And the fact that we do have people transversing here, and how many people do we have transfers a day to Chandler? Hundreds, thousands, tens of thousands of people transferring? That's the answer. That's the question in my mind is what do we do to that? How do we prevent that virus um, from not picking Chandler and not picking Mesa? So we're consistent, hopefully it'll go somewhere else, but not here. So that's, that's my question. That's my comment.
Additional questions or comments for, um, Ryan?
Mayor.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Um, so we talked about, I, I had one quick question on hospitals, and this might be for the fire chief as well. Are hospitals voluntarily shutting down their elective surgeries to be able to handle this increase? If there is one for people coming into the hospitals? this increase, if there is one, for people coming into the hospitals?
Mayor, Councilmember Stewart, that is an option that they have. And so that each hospital has set a specific threshold where that when they hit whatever that trigger point is, is that they can start to reduce those surgeries and create capacity within their hospital.
Has there been any discussion about that yet? Have you heard that Dignity and Chandler is going to shut off elective surgeries to prepare for what may come?
Councilmember Stewart, I feel extremely confident that Dignity is, they are watching it every single day. They understand that they have that option to do that. They have not said that that is what they're going to do right now, but they know that that is an opportunity for them to create that capacity and that they will do that.
Well, good. So another example of local control, if they need to do it, they can do that. Great, thank you. The other question that I had, Chief, I'm sorry, it came to me after one of the questions that Vice Mayor Lopez said. Do the positive cases come off the total number? So we started at, let's say, five weeks ago, we were at, we were at 0.17% of the population tested positive, a fraction of that were hospitalized, a fraction of that were actually put in ICU and a fraction of that over, mostly over 65, were actually felt, succumbed to the virus. Do those positive numbers fall off or do they just keep going up?
Councilmember Stewart, it's a running toll.
It's a running toll.
Those numbers continue to increase and they add, each week is added to the previous week.
So what, so just to expound on that, just a little bit more, when I look at the numbers for Chandler per se, we have 1,078 cases as of the data that you provided us just the other day, I'm sorry. Is that the right number?
Councilmember Stewart, it probably is. I believe it's up to 12.
Total cases, yeah, yeah. So 1,078. So if I look at, and I'm trying to get some more data, if I go back to my numbers from, let me see here, I had this, I forgot to write the note down. If I go back to May 20th, which is a month ago about, we had 462. The, how long does the sickness generally last? Two weeks?
Councilmember, it can last, as far as how long is the virus staying in your nose or in your throat?
Yeah.
It can last actually quite a few weeks. You're contagious up to 14 days, seems to be the maximum right now. The virus, when you are first exposed, you have about a 5.1 day incubation period. Most people start showing signs and symptoms, I believe it's 99.7% by the 11th day, but right around 14 days is when you are no longer, you know, potentially no longer shedding the virus. But you may still be positive. And so being positive for the virus and shedding the virus, which means that you're still, that you could still spread it, are two different things. There is a lot of research out there, there's a lot of different numbers, but that's really, when I look at AZDHS and public health, their documents, that's where they're putting it at.
Well, you've done a tremendous job of organizing this data and briefing us every week and I'm grateful for that. So I guess my, this might be rhetorical, which sometimes we do up here, those 400 cases that were a month ago could be fully healed with antibody and should actually probably be off this total number. Is that a fair statement?
Councilmember Stewart, that is a very fair statement, that there's no way that the, what we call recoveries are tracked right now. And so we know that there are recoveries in all of these numbers. However, we, all we do is continue to increase the total positive case. And so there's no way to see that as far as should they come off, that would, that would be a difference.
Well, I'm sorry to put you on the spot with a question like that, but I'm just trying to get to the data so we can make great decisions on the behalf of our community. So thank you for that and I'll keep calling you when I have questions like that. Thank you, Chief.
Any additional questions for Ryan? Okay, thank you. Before we go back, I just, you know, speaking to Chief Duggan, you know, I look at totals weekly, Councilmember Stewart, and I don't look at the running number, but this past week, we had 244 brand new cases. The week before, we had 100. So the week before that, 99, the week before that, 33. So I, this week is going to be well over last week. So when I look at this, I am concerned about the current, not the cumulative total, but what's going on this week compared to last week in terms of what are we seeing today? And what are the cases today, not so much of the overall total, because it's the, it's the change. To me, that is the most significant thing that we're addressing with anything that we have the capacity to do. I can't change what happened three months ago, but I, you know, whatever things that we can do to impact tomorrow or whatever, it's based upon what is happening now. So for me, that's what I look at is what's our, what's our delta? How many new cases do we have this week? How many new cases do we have last week? And that's, that's what I look at, whether a day or a week, to be able to examine what's going on in our community, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I was, I was just, I was just asking, it wasn't directed at you, it was, I was just trying to get some information for everybody that's here. But thank you.
Me too.
Mayor and Council, I would like for Chief Duggan to come forward today. I know he's been in correspondence with other chiefs around our area and can speak to some of the enforcement issues or questions you might have.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Our enforcement strategy, based on your direction, would be very similar to what we had in place back in March and April. And we've heard it a number of times already today, but our emphasis will be first on education and compliance. And there are a number of ways to do that. It could be simply an officer maybe calling a business that had been identified as having possible violations, or certainly an officer making a visit in person. And collectively among the chiefs in the valley that I routinely speak with, our collective concern is that, number one, especially due to the latest spike in numbers, that any type of encounter would certainly increase the risk to our officers for exposure. So that's certainly something we're mindful of. Then of course, any encounter when we are enforcing a law, there's potential for escalation and conflict. And that's something we're very mindful of and something that no one wants to see occur. So the emphasis and the efforts will be placed on the front end by trying to educate and trying to gain compliance.
I do know that today, and it was my last day chairing the Public Transportation Authority, and one of the issues referred there had to do with, I believe, Philadelphia with a case to where police were called in to basically wrangle in and arrest someone who wouldn't put a mask on. And I know for me, I have zero interest or appetite in anything that is going to put our, our police into an escalating situation over, over someone using a mask in our community. To me, that would be putting the officers as well as our community. And I really appreciate the education awareness part of this. And I, I just have no interest in putting our, any of our officers in harm's way in whatever, whatever comes from a proclamation here. And I want to be very clear about that from up front here. Any other comments or questions with police? Councilmember Orlando.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, so a few months ago, maybe six weeks ago, we started opening things up and one of the questions I asked as well at that time was enforcement. You answered it very similar. So have you been called out to any of these opening places where people said they were not behaving properly?
I, I, I'll answer your question. I, at this point, I can't recall any time we've been called out, certainly in the past few weeks. But up until, I know this week, there has not been a single citation or complaint issued as a result. So this is a little different because depending on what the new regulations are going to be, it could be a little more inclusive, especially when we're talking about wearing a mask. But again, our folks here in this city, we use great common sense and discretion and collectively we want to keep the city safe. But I just can't envision a scenario like you just described occurring here in Chandler.
And I don't think we want to see that, obviously, Chief. I think we've all, my point is, the last six to eight weeks, we've been talking about education, education, education. We have very little issues with enforcement, which is good news. But, so I also, same manner, do we have any other thoughts on potentially how we could, as, phone does ring occasionally or will ring if it does ring? Do we have any other thoughts of how we could handle the education piece of it? Is there other departments that could help us out on this area or what are your thoughts on that?
Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, as Chief Duggan spoke to you a few weeks ago, we did have stood up completely and still do, our hotline number. If anyone were to call that and we were to put that out there as the number to call, at least during typical business hours, our codes department could help in that. They were helping previously and helped to supplement a little bit of what the police department is, is receiving. After hours, those calls typically go straight to the police department and they did a fantastic job triaging that before. And I would suspect they would be able to do that again, depending on priority calls. So they have to always look at priority when calls are coming in.
And I think the residents understand that. I think they do. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Rowe. I couldn't tell what that look was. I wanted to word your button.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just, I don't want to, I don't want to miss the bus myself if this is about ready to wrap, or are we continuing discussion?
What do you have to say?
Well, I guess, I guess, is this the time to, I mean, my recommendations is, is that if you, if you don't want people arrested, then you don't call for criminal charges, you don't start there. Police can enforce petty offenses that are not criminal. They can do that. If we don't, as a city, have any choice as to whether something's a petty offense or a civil offense versus a class three or a class two or a class one misdemeanor, if we don't have those choices, then I hope that any proclamation will not go down that road. And so, and I have a long list of things, I mean, it's important that we protect our seniors. We need to act, ask for continued social distancing. We need to support the use of masks in public places. We need to use some of our grant money to educate. We need to produce online PSAs. And we need to, maybe we need to put political signs out with other signs and tell people and remind them to protect themselves and protect, protect each other. Educate, publish a list of recommendations and when we do have people that we might need to contact, give them a card that says, here's what we recommend. Remind them of what CDC guidelines are. And then I don't know, is there a proclamation already prepared? Have we shared proclamations with other cities and do we have one already going? And I guess that's a question of the city manager.
Mayor, Councilmember Rowe, for those cities that have landed on a final document, we have been actively pursuing copies of those. And so both Ryan, Kelly and myself have looked at a number of those. Staff has began work on a draft, if the council wants to go down the path of the proclamation. That has been started and Kelly can fill you in on exactly where we are with that.
If I, if I may, Mayor, Councilmember Rowe, as you know, the mayor did issue a proclamation back in March declaring the emergency. And if it is the desire of the mayor with, with the council's blessing, we can add on to that proclamation. And it, just to remind the council, that proclamation wasn't aimed at enforcement. It was aimed at strongly encouraging and recommending and educating. And in fact, the governor's executive order said, "The intent of the executive order is to ensure that the state of Arizona continues to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 to the greatest extent possible. All law enforcement and regulatory agencies that have enforcement authority under existing law should focus first on educating and working to promote best practices to accomplish this goal." So in reading the directives of the EO, are any proclamation issued by the mayor after this executive order should really focus on that education and informing piece more than the enforcement piece? And we can write language consistent with that.
Okay, so I, I very clearly heard about the education and inform. I've heard that. So, but I, I want to reiterate, if we are going down a path of, you know, our, our public safety folks get caught in the middle sometimes on this kind of thing. It's a, it's a situation. It's like, we just really want you to educate, we really don't want people to go to jail, and yet it is, it sounds like it technically is going to be a crime. So we'll have to, I'll see, I guess we're going to see what the wording is or whatever before we'll talk more about that, I guess.
Mayor.
City manager.
Sorry, as you all know, we're getting information by the minute. And so it looks like the county has posted a meeting tomorrow to take action as directed an executive session regarding a countywide mitigation effort concerning COVID-19. So that could get into play here in terms of whatever is decided. Just wanted to let you know that we did just find that out.
So responding, a proclamation is, it is my intention of revising the proclamation to include language that our communities should wear a mask when they are unable to social distance and in, whether that's crowded situations outside or inside. We can put language in there that, that minimizes to negates police participation, which is my intention. But each of my, and this might honestly, this, what the county does might supersede our plans and at this point, I will wait until I hear. I don't find it, I don't find any value of issuing a proclamation for the sake of it. But, so I would prefer to wait and hear what the county puts into place before we do anything since it would be just an exercise in futility to do that. But my goal in calling this meeting is, is to listen to our, our voices here, inform council what we're doing. The options before us are to take action, our resolution abided by the, by us issuing an ordinance or a proclamation. A proclamation is the easiest to get out the door of anything there to immediately have our community mask up. Our goal is to keep our community safe. Our goal is to, is to make sure that we are protecting. I do realize I have read every, I've read hundreds of emails, I've read hundreds of articles and I know that there is, there is many in our community that question the efficacy of a mask. I do understand that, but I am going by CDC guidelines. I'm going by those that are going to be regarded as the, as the experts in this field. And if masks eliminate or reduce, help us continue to flatten the curve, to keep people, to protect our most vulnerable, to keep this at a point to where no further action is required, both by hospitals or, or by the governor to shut down our community, to me, it's, it's a, it's an action that is easy and it is an act to, easy to observe and, and that has potential value. So that's, that's, I guess, my answer to your, your question, Councilmember. Additional comments from here? Vice Mayor.
Are we in a public comment period too, or are we?
I was not.
Okay.
I was really set this up to have a conversation with each of you.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and throw my two cents in then on what you said, and I agree with the vast majority of what, what you mentioned, again, across the board. So I want to start off with, again, I do feel there's a lot of the emails, and we just, we get the printouts, but we've all been, been dealing with emails, starting about, I think it was about three, four minutes after the governor started his, his conference, that we started receiving emails. And I think it was about over, well over 70 within an hour. So tried to read most of them within today. I think we've probably well over 200, 300, so.
I'm a thousand at mine.
I wouldn't doubt it. It's still going, they're probably still coming in. But I want to, I want to reiterate to the, to the, to the majority of the people out there, or... there, or to everyone out there that sent us an email, you know, I want to say thank you for one engaging. We may not be able to read every email immediately. Again, a lot of this is time sensitive, but I want you to make you aware, make you aware that, again, your, your voice does get listened to, and we do hear you. There are, both sides of this, there are a wide range of the asks, similar to the previous weeks, when it came to reallocating funds for police, when it came to responses to rioting and protesting. There's a very wide range of emails and demands that we get. So it is our job to make the sausage and try to walk that line. And I do feel for all those, especially around COVID, which, which never really went away, even though it dropped from the headlines and from our email boxes for a few, few weeks there. It's, it's back with a vengeance. And I do feel that we all have family members that are at risk. We all have family members that are, we're concerned for. And so I do know that there is a, we look to other people to help us, to help make sure we can keep them safe. I'm also an engineer by trade, and I've said many times that I'm data-driven, hence why I kind of ask for more information on, from the police chief. And when it comes to these articles and scientific articles, some say it works, some say it doesn't, some say it actually can be hindrance and depends upon whether you've got other allergies, whether or not you do reclaim your mask, black and forth, it goes back, back, back. You know, to me, there are little things that we can do as responsible adults in order to keep ourselves safe, to keep our citizenry safe, and also to keep our families safe. And as part of that, the emails we get and the demands that we get, this is a long winded, I know, but there's a lot of demands that come in that a lot of people I know are emotional. There's these demands that are just, they, they're in face violation of our public and our constitution. A lot of the stuff that's being demanded out there, I can appreciate the emotion behind it. But I want to make sure you understand that we do hear you, but simply because we may not do exactly what you want, okay, doesn't mean that we're not listening. So as part of that, I kind of hinted that I believe that we're all adults. We are responsible. If you don't feel comfortable going out, if you are at risk and have children at home that are at risk, stay home. Wear your masks, clean up after yourselves, and minimize your exposure. And if you do not have those, the risks available to you, you're able to go out. And if people ask you to wear a mask, or hey, you know, I'm happy to be out with my grandfather, or if you're somebody at risk, you have to be out and see somebody not wearing a mask, be friendly. Hey, do you mind wearing a mask? I'm at risk. I'm willing to bet, as our police chief said, you're going to get a 99.99% compliance. Because we don't, we're not a city of jerks. We're all here to help each other. Okay? We all want everyone to be safe. So for that reason, again, as, as I alluded to, the mayor, I, I agree that we want to educate. We want people to know you should be wearing a mask. If you're at risk, stay home. If you don't want to patronize a store that is not requiring masks, don't go. If you don't want to, if you want to go to a store that does, like a Costco, or that's the only one I know that requires them right now, anyway, go there. And again, those are the choices that we can make. As adults, we can take our dollars and take our feet and our children to the businesses that we like what they're doing and not to the businesses we don't like what they're doing. And we leave that in the hands to our citizenry with education and with hopefully a little bit of grace out there. Everyone can be kind to each other. Thank you.
Additional comments on my issuing a proclamation? Councilmember Wong.
I have been thinking a proper role as, as government. Do we really should mandate what our citizen can do? And if we do, how to enforce it? I just feel, just assume, I, just assume we are going to mandate everybody went to a restaurant, need to wear it? And when they wear it and enter the restaurant, well, they need to take it out to eat? And how are you going to enforce it? Just like our vice mayor said, this, this is something that we should take the responsibility of ourselves. But at the same time, I would like to say, for the city facilities, I think we can, we can mandate that. You want to enter a city facility that's open to the public, like libraries, like community center, then that's, that's thing the city really can enforce. You want, you don't want to wear a mask, well, you, we are not going to allow you to use the service. And that's, that's thing, that's a compromise that we can do. So I don't know if I made my point clear. That's some, something we, I think as a city, we, we do not want to mandate, oh, you go to restaurant, you go to movie theater, you go to some other grocery store, stores, that the city asks you to wear a mask, or you will be fined, or be arrested, or whatever. I don't think that's a properly role as a government should do. So I, I were against that. But for the facility the city has, we can limit your assets if you, you, you don't want to comply. We just don't allow you to come in. So I don't know how other council members think. And this is education. So city saying you want to use the city service, wear it. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments about our proclamation, council? Councilmember Orlando.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I don't, I don't look at these 500 and, maybe I have the right number here, 525 emails as of 3:30 today, plus phone calls, of which 35 residents said no, no mask. 400, excuse me, make sure I got the right numbers. 467 have said yes. They're pretty explicit here. There was no, all across the board on this one. Impose mandatory mask. Let's be, let's keep public safety in order. Like make mask mandatory for everyone in public areas, like groceries, malls, all the stores. Medical experts reduce the spread of COVID. Let's use our mask. Say yes to mask. They're not all over the board, at least what I'm reading. It's saying, help us. They're desperate for help. We asked the chamber to do a survey. Came back, these are businesses now. Almost 3,000 people surveyed, came back with a response. 2,020 said yes, mandatory mask. 919 said no. Two to one. I don't know what the number was, 10 to one, 20 to one, 30 to one? My math's not that quick. It went to New York schools. But I don't know. I'm seeing here that we're not, we're hesitant to say what the residents are asking us to do. We had great discussion here about how things are not just growing, but accelerating. We talked about borders. The primary, you know, council, I said this many, many months ago. When this is over, and it will be over, these residents are going to look at us, and they're going to say, what did you do to protect me and my family in public safety? That's our primary goal right now, is protecting the public safety. I have, I've talked to many business owners. And they want people to come back. They want to see the consumer confidence. And if they see masks, and I've been looking at this myself, I went to a place the other night, had masks, they had, they had individuals that were wearing gloves, they had machines that actually touch machines. And the whole idea of this was very simple, was to protect their customer and to protect their employees. I felt comfortable going back to that restaurant. Now, for those restaurants, or those businesses that don't get it, you're right. No one's going to go to them, and they're going to fail. So why do we have to pick winners and choosers? Why don't we just make it across the board? Make this real easy for everyone and protect our public, protect our businesses, so that in November, December, and you said this earlier, Mayor, I agree 100%, do we really want to see a second shutdown? And some people are talking about a third shutdown. Seriously? Ladies and gentlemen, I, council members, I want to get on board with all the cities in this valley. I want to make this mandatory. I want to make it compliant. I want to work with these individuals. I want to use some of those care dollars to help support buying the PPE, to help these businesses and residents be successful. That's what I want to see here tonight. And, oh, well, I don't know, somebody doesn't like it, or, council, I'm sorry, I've been pretty consistent with this for the last three and a half months. We need to protect our public. They are crying for help. I have doctors that sent, 4,000 medical professionals sent a letter to the governor, 4,000 medical professionals, saying, do something, Governor. And he did. And I appreciate that. I appreciate him giving us a little bit of anxiety, a little bit of a stretchaway here. Council, I can't say this any better than what I'm saying tonight. We need to take bold action. We need to be with our sister and brother, sister cities and get this thing under control so that two weeks from now, we can look at it. If it's under control, great. If it's not under control, we'll look at something else. But let's not punt tonight. That's my concern.
Let's go councilmember Wong and vice mayor.
So, well, I like what councilmember Orlando said, but I'm thinking about the enforcement problem, saying that we mandate the restaurant to wear the mask. It probably were easier to require the workers to wear masks. But if you want to require the customer to wear masks, just assume there's only one or two people who don't want to comply, how are you going to do it? And also, when you go to restaurant, you, you are eating, you're drinking, you will need to take out your mask all the time. So I just don't think that's very practical. But if, yeah, but if you are saying, oh, the workers, the, the servants are going to, the waiters are going to show wear it, I, I think I can compromise. And I, I see the point.
So council, I really don't want to get into the weeds tonight of, in terms of this type of business or versus another. As I mentioned, I, I do, I'm asking for your input, and I thank you for the input I'm getting, which I am getting, you know, on the issuance of a proclamation. If, again, the county supersedes and does this, then we can look at that and see if there is anything else we should do. But any additional comments related to that, councilmember or vice mayor?
Yeah, this could all be rendered moot, depending upon what the county does, anyway. But, so again, again, reading before writing that proclamation, of course, I know you're going to do the right thing and wait for that to come out and see what, any adjustments. And you've been very good at engaging us. Sure as councilmember Orlando's statement that, again, very weighted on one side or another, and I can appreciate that. And I mean, again, I believe this is an emotional item. I mean, we had 99% people saying we needed to fund the police department by 45%. As this body, we do not run policy by the whims of those amount of emails we get. We are here to protect the rights and citizenry of our, of our citizens, constitutional as we were sworn into uphold. If the number of emails we get tell us that we need to rezone a site or kick somebody out of their property because they don't like the way they operate, we do not do that. That is by, we, we rule here via the rule of law and through the constitution. I appreciate the concern. And again, I, I feel the emotion in the emails of, of the plight that many have with sick children, with sick loved ones that are residing with them. Again, we are all responsible for our own safety. Okay? Mask wearing will help, and I agree with that. We do need to educate people to wear masks, wear face shields, wear gloves, limit your exposure, social distance. But to go in and tell people we're going to throw people in prison because the government mandates they wear something, I hate to see the circling slope that goes down. Because then we talk about other religious effects. We talk about other items that people are going to want enforced in the city that we will have to abide by because we get 1,000 emails saying, tell people to do something. So that's my response to the number of emails. And again, I know we got a thou, well over 1,000 of them. And I may be contradictory to that, but again, you need to realize that we need to rule here based on for the whole public. Okay? And that is consistent with our constitution. So.
If I could ask you, thank you, but if I could ask you to refrain? I appreciate your enthusiasm for one side or another, but it's, it's not going to be helpful for us here tonight. I do appreciate that. And let me say, again, there is no path that any of us, myself, is talking about that is, that is looking at citations or putting people in jail. And we will make sure that whatever we do reflects that. So, councilmember Stewart.
Mayor, thank you. And you're right, we're a constitutional republic, we're not a democracy. We are not mob rule, because with mob rule, you get bad, bad things. So one of the things that we have to think about here is how do we get to the middle? How do we find a place where we can get along, not be hateful to one another, and do the right thing? I'm going to wear a mask. I'm, I, you know, I, I posted last night, I have coffee with somebody next week. 65 comorbidity factor, I'm going to sit six feet away, I'm going to wear a mask because it's the right thing to do. We are all going to do that. What I don't want to do is criminalize my neighbors or create a situation where people are calling my police department, reporting on people. I, since this is, I have an email from when we shut down the parks. And it's from, and I won't say who it's from, but it's from a lady that sent me a picture of a three-year-old on a slide and said, what are you going to do about this? Now, I didn't reply to the email, but that's what this ordinance, if made mandatory, will happen. The proclamation is already done. Because we're under emergency order by the title, the mayor has the authority to do that. And I think what he's doing is fine, because there is not going to be an enforcement arm of this. Our police are already doing their best to create trust. They've done it for years, they're continuing to do it. And the last thing we need is to have them go up to somebody and, and say, you know, where's your mask? Right? Or write them up and put them into the docket for, or to take their information in and put them into the system. That's the last thing we need. If we need anything right now, we need more self-governance, which is what I applaud the governor for making this local control. We need more responsibility to one another, and we need less bickering and fighting on Facebook and all these other social media. I sat with my neighbor who are pro-mask, big time. But they also understand the fact that they don't want people to get tickets. And they don't want people that can't pay tickets, which are economically challenged, to have to go to jail if they can't pay them. I mean, it's a slippery slope. You look at, you look at the war on drugs, you look at all these different things that have over-criminalized this, this nation that we live in, and we can't do it anymore. So it's one of the main reasons that I ran is for, tonight, for, for a situation like this, right? Whoever thought city councils would be deciding constitutional issues like this? And we are. We have to push back when authoritarians want to take away our liberties. We also have to be mindful of the fact that there is somebody that's going to be scared. And we have to wear the mask. We don't need to have these draconian laws to make that happen. We have to do the right thing. And when somebody doesn't, and the other thing is, and then I'll, and I'll wrap it up, Mayor, I apologize, but you know, you get, you get your two minutes, I'm going to take it, is that I can't imagine what it feels like for somebody to have COPD, or if they have autism, and a broadly spectrum autism, and they cannot wear a mask, to be, the way they feel if somebody looks at them because they're not wearing a mask and they're not complying to this collective, right? This, this group think, that's not the way we're supposed to be. So that's all I'll add, and I, and I'll leave it at that before I get mad or frustrated or, but I am, I, I am grateful to live in this community. We believe in individual liberties, we believe in rights of the constitution, and we will do the right thing. As soon as I walk out of here, I'll have a mask on because I care about my community. Thank you.
Final comments, councilmember Wong.
Okay. So you see the, you see the culture is changing. Two months ago, if you wear a mask, people look at you like you are some strange person. And now, you, if you don't wear a mask, people feel you are a little bit strange or maybe irresponsible. So you, you see things, things do change. And there's a saying, saying that if you want to please everybody, you won't please any. anybody. But I would like to try it. I, I, I do see both sides have their points. At the beginning, I was talking about a proper role of government. I think I, this echo, vice mayor, and echo Mark Stewart, councilmember Stewart's saying, well, you, you two definitely can say much better than I do. So, well, what is the problem where, and I don't want anybody to be seen as a criminal by not wearing, wearing a mask. So, but at the same time, councilmember Mayor Orlando's point is also well-taken. What do we do to protect the people? And the, the feeling of, the feeling of anxiety is real, and I'm, I'm wor, I worry about myself and, and everybody too. And that the parents also worry about their kids going to school, go to public area, and those threats are real. So how can we please everybody and also maintain a properly role as a government? So I just think we can do something like Costco do. We can do some kind of compromise. Yeah, we, and we are not treating any people who don't wear masks as a criminal. So that's why I just suggested, city facilities, libraries, or some kind of indoor facilities, you've got to wear a mask, or we do not allow you to use service. So nobody will be arrested. And on the private sectors, let them, let them do the decision, but maybe if we don't, we really want to do something, maybe we can require the company to put out some kind of sign, saying, wearing a mask is recommended by the city, or by CDC, or whatever. And if we can, if the city would like to provide the funding, we can make up those signs, let them take it. Or this, or I don't really know how this work, okay? But, so this educational. So I hope this will please everybody. And we, we can do this first, and then see what will be happen a week later or a month later. If situation really gone very, very bad, we really need to do some more extreme ma, measurement, we can discuss. But I, I top it, yeah, I, I top it, but, so, yeah, that's my final comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart, thank you.
The proclamation is mandating or strongly recommending mask wearing in public, right? Is it going to discern between outdoor and indoor? I mean, the, the specifically, are we going to wait for the, the county to see what happens? I mean, we're going there, just so councils aware, we're, we're going to, I guess, the term that I've been seeing in my emails is mandatory masking, but it's the enforcement piece that is the, the, the challenge, right? Because then we have people that have, you know, that, that have COPD and asthma and things like that, is that correct?
So let me address this as a final comment, please. So my intention is, one, to wait to see what the county does, all right? So we have had a conversation about preliminary language, which was to, I'm, I'm thinking of the word we had in there, but to have, and I use the word have, Chandler residents wear a mask when they cannot social distance, whether it's in a crowd outside or in an inside place. There, and part of that is, we will, we will review this in a couple of weeks, depending on where things are going with the governors. We will lead people to follow the governor's existing EO. There's, there's been further guidelines that have been issued to businesses, particularly restaurants, I believe, today as well, and to follow CDC guidelines. I have no interest on superseding anything that the governor has said. This will put us in line, I believe, with the actions that will be taken with all of our neighbors. They might have enforcement pieces or nuances of different, but in essence, we will be part of, of a larger portion that says for, for businesses, if you want to instill competence, wear masks. For individuals, if you want to, concern for your neighbor and for those who are vulnerable, wear a mask. And that's the extent that, that I intend for this to go. So I want to thank you all for your, your comments, for your guidance tonight. We'll be having a huddle up tomorrow, again, with lang, probably putting together language before the county issues there, but certainly waiting and modifying, and even seeing if it's necessary. If they release jurisdictions like cities to do their own thing, then we will, I, we have no idea what they're doing yet. We're the, honestly, we are the first one out of the gate here with, because the governor just issued his order 20, what, 25 hours ago now, maybe 26, I don't know how long we've been here. But we are the first ones out of the gate. If you heard Ryan Peters, all other cities are, are looking to this. I wanted to be first out, because I wanted to give some guidance to other cities. We find very often, people want to know what everyone else is doing, and will follow accordingly. So council, I want to thank you again for, for being able to meet on short notice. I, I apologize to those who are here, if you had hoped to speak, or if you had left speaker cards or, or comment cards, we'll certainly add those, we're available to talk to. I'm not going anywhere, if you want to talk to me, I'll mask up and meet you out there, and, and anything else. So with that, city manager, anything final?
No, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Thank you, council.